Good evening. I want to welcome you to the regular meeting of this Calamasa City Council and successive agency of this two Calamasa redevelopment agency. And Darlene, you want to give us a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cervantes?
Here.
Councilmember Manley?
Here.
Councilmember Molina?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Hewitt?
I'd like to excuse her, she's off traveling in the southeast.
Okay, and Mayor Davis?
I'm here. Then we have City Manager Kobo, City Attorney Borgho, City Clerk Gertis, Finance Director Reed, yep, Planing Director Youssef, I'm losing it tonight, Lucia, Public Works Associate Engineers, nobody, oh, I'm sorry, Margaret, thank you for attending. Uh, City Engineer Mike is someplace. And Fire Chief O'Connell, and I want to welcome the new Sheriff, Captain Peterson. You're welcome. And since you got the short straw, you get to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, equal to everyone, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have communications from the public. I'm sorry, I'm jumping the gun again. Of course, it's only the Edison Company, they don't really count. Darlene, you want to come up, please?
Sure, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Davis, City Council Members and City Staff, I am Eileen Flores with Southern California Edison, I'm a Government Relations Manager, and I want to thank all of you for this opportunity to provide you with an update on our wildfire mitigation plan. The primary objective of our wildfire mitigation plan, also known as WMP, is to safeguard public safety. We have an actionable, measurable, and adaptive plan to reduce the risk of a potential wildfire associated with our electrical infrastructure in high-fire-risk areas. At the same time, we are intensely aware of the impact of planned WMP work and public safety power shut-offs, or also known as PSS events, on our customers and communities. For those who are not familiar with PSS, it is a critical tool that we use to prevent wildfires, and it is when we may temporarily de-energize or shut off power to a circuit in a neighborhood during dangerous weather conditions to prevent our electrical system from becoming a source of ignition. These safety shut-offs are a measure of last resort for keeping you and your communities safe. Our WMP aims to reduce the risk of wildfires while addressing the hardships caused by de-energization events. We're strengthening our grid and adding technologies to reduce the chance of wildfires. Some of these improvements are also part of our work to reduce the number of customers affected by PSS outages. This slide, I know it's kind of hard to read, but can also be found on our website, and I think if you need copies of it, I can make those available. But this slide provides an illustration of some of the wildfire mitigation work that we are doing, and I'll highlight just a few of them. We've been placing bare, we've been replacing bare overhead power lines with covered conductor, which significantly reduces the chance that a power line could arc or spark if it comes in contact with an object like a tree branch or a metallic balloon. In addition, fast-acting fuses interrupt a current faster and reduces the risk of ignitions when there is an electrical fault, such as when a tree falls on a power line during high-fire winds. As of March 2023, we have replaced more than 4,508 miles of covered conductor. We continue to do equipment inspections, we inspect overhead transmission, distribution, and generation equipment in high-fire-risk areas, from both the ground and the air using drones and/or helicopters for any needed maintenance, repair, or replacement. And we continue to do our vegetation management and inspection, where we trim and remove trees to prevent vegetation from coming into contact with electrical equipment and potentially sparking a fire. And then, of course, we continue to look at new technologies, SCE is continuously developing new approaches and collaborating with other utilities, academia, and the energy sector to make sure our communities are safer. A number of circuits that are in high-fire-risk areas that serve Calamasa have been upgraded, and I'm sure you've seen many of our crews throughout the city replacing bare wires with covered conductor. SCE continues to strengthen its grid to increase reliability and lessen the need for PSS outages. When communities face dangerous wildfire conditions, these improvements can help minimize the number of customers affected by PSS. We have a number of PSS customer programs and resources that are available should there be a PSS activation. One of the things that we do have in place is called a Community Crew Vehicle, which is a mobile unit where we provide information about the outage, customers can get updates, receive water, snacks, and vouchers for ice, and if available, access to restrooms and cold bags for medication. We also provide charging for small personal electronics and some mobile device, mobile health device, medical devices. I know that we've partnered with the City of Calamasa, we've actually parked a Community Crew Vehicle in the parking lot of the Fire Department, so thank you for partnering with us on that. We also have partnered with 211 to help customers with access and functional needs, to help them develop a resiliency plan, and also make sure they're enrolled in various assistance programs, and also have access to things such as food banks and other services that they may need during a PSS outage. And then, of course, we have our Critical Care Backup Battery Program that provides eligible customers with a battery backup that they can use for their medical devices, and in most cases, if they qualify, it is provided to them for free. And then we also have a rebate program for portable batteries and generators for customers. Another source of information and communications is our enhanced website, which is sce.com/odigmapp. And there you can find all the information on the various outages, such as our maintenance or scheduled outages, along with repair outages, and those are outages that occur unexpectedly, like if a car hits a pole, or if a metallic balloon comes into contact with one of our lines. This is also the same location where you can find PSS information. It provides a lot of details, such as the approximate location, and the estimated restoration time, along with the cause, and how many customers are affected. And then, most importantly, we want to make sure that our customers and the residents of Calamasa stay informed. We encourage everyone to visit the website, we have another, a number of links that will be on the last page, but we also host a number of community meetings, many of those are now in person, but we also offer them virtually. And then, most importantly, we want to make sure all of our customers are signed up for outage alerts. You can receive those by text, an automated phone call, or email, so please make sure that you are signed up for it, or that you have updated your information. We also have a medical baseline program, and it's a program that assists those that do, that do, are dependent on medical equipment, that use electricity. And then, as always, we want to make sure that everyone is always prepared, whether it's an earthquake, a power outage, or any type of natural disaster. If you go to our website, you'll see lots of information on how to be prepared for a power outage. I've had to use the page myself, you know, when I've had to go to, I was telling someone about how I had a trip, and I had to leave for LAX at like six in the morning, and of course, my power went out at four o'clock. It was a really windy day, and I kind of had an idea that it possibly could go out, so I made sure I parked my car outside, so that I wouldn't have to be fumbling around with the garage door opener in case the electricity did go out. So, little tips like that will help you be prepared in the event of an unexpected outage. And then, lastly, this page provides a number of resources, hopefully, if the city can add that to a webpage on, if you have information on emergency preparedness, but there's a lot of great resources, and also fascinating websites, there's alertca.live, and it actually gives you access to all of the wildfire cameras, that's available to the public, you can actually see from the higher peaks, the smoke, you know, you can see some of the flames, unfortunately, but just so you can stay informed. And then we have our weather stations, and then, as I mentioned, all of the other ways to be prepared, and then, most importantly, there's information there on how to sign up for the alert, or the outages, for the electrical outages. If you have, and that's it, if you have any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Thank you.
I recently, I hope you can hear me, I recently attended one of your workshops, I looked for you right there, but there was a lot of information, and I did bring it back to our City Manager and our City Clerk, who put it on our website, a lot of information for families of low economic status, and kind of all the things that you mentioned here, so, thank you for all that, it's, it's a lot of work, but it's worth having, and at least we know where to go to get the information, so, it was a great workshop in Fontana, just want to let you know.
Thank you for attending, and I'm sorry I wasn't there.
I think you're on vacation, but that's okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Question? This 211, for, it's like, you know, there's a lot of people here that, well, they live in homes, but also the mobile homes, and when the power goes out, they're in a world of hurt. You know, the 211, you have battery packs that you, well, that's the number they have to call to see if they're eligible for it, or?
No, that's, 211 is really there to provide them with the other community assistance, but for the battery packs, I can send that flyer out, so that you have it, there's a specific SCE number that they can call.
Could you send one to each of the mobile home parks? Edison be that nice, or you want to just go, go ahead and give it to Darlene?
I'll work with Darlene on that, we'll see what we can do.
Yeah, because it does, when there's, you know, there's an outage and everything else, and, you know, I know you can't plant them all, it, some people are restricted pretty hard, you know, as far as their breathing apparatus and things like that, and that's why I was curious about. But thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Always good to see you.
Nice to see you too.
Now, communications from the public. And John Gates?
Good evening, Mayor Davis, and City Council Members and Staff. I'm John Gates, I live in Sherondale, and then I'll talk about Burch, indirectly. Mayor Davis, I want to compliment you, sir, on you recently complying with the weed abatement program in the city. I believe that the Sherondale property and others surrounding the Singleton and Calamasa Boulevard acreage is an accident waiting to happen. I left a couple messages for PJ this morning regarding maybe if they've been approached, Stern's family and other property members, but it really, it really is so conspicuous and obvious that it's, it's an accident waiting to happen. I, I've read some of the rules and regulations or whatever associated with that, and I know if there's no compliance, that the city would get contract services to clean up the situation, protect the city. So I'm asking the city to immediately address that property. I know it's been very busy right now with all the things going on with all the fires that we have, but I'm asking that an immediate attention be made to that property. Thank you.
You're welcome. Dr. Rhonda Spencer?
Hi, let me see if I can, thank you for inviting me to speak, Mayor and Councilman. I am a professor at Loma Linda University, are you guys able to hear me well? Okay, I'm a professor at Loma Linda University, and I'm an epidemiologist, and one of my specialties is air pollution, because where else are you going to study it than Southern California? In particular, I do the goods movement industry, so I'm one of the few epidemiologists that study and publish on the impact of rail yards, and the impact of the goods movement industry, which includes the diesel trucks, okay? So I have some handouts for you guys, because I heard you guys are going to be one of the next communities building warehouses, which will increase, of course, the truck trafficking in your area. And I wanted to basically give you a little background really quick, because I know I have three minutes, and professors, it's hard for us to stay within three minutes, but I'm going to do my best, and I'm going to give you a little background, some humble advice, and then some homework, because no good professor would leave without giving you all homework, and that includes you guys as well, okay? So, basically, we live in an area where we already have a significant amount of air pollution, even driving in here from Loma Linda, I can see it, because it comes from the onshore breezes pushing the LA pollution that starts at 9:00 AM our way, right? By the time it gets here to where we are, the sunlight has already heated up the particles and made them more toxic than when they originated in LA at 9:00 AM, which is not great, this is, this is the nature of where we are. But then on top of that, if we add local community sources, and let's face it, a major warehouse, if you build one, is going to be another local source. And one of the biggest challenges is the diesel pollution, and the vulnerable populations you guys all know is, you know, pregnant women, one of my places I really study is children, because we know air pollution not only exacerbates asthma, it causes you to develop it in the first place, right? Immune compromise, and basically, anybody who lives in this, you're, you're at risk, right? It's not great to breathe this stuff in, and we want to try to find ways to reduce the exposure. So what are we dealing with? Well, the diesel trucks, a big one of the pollutants, probably 90% of the pollutants they emit is the small fine particle PM 2.5, and that is one of the big culprits that really gets down, bypasses your defenses, and gets right into your bloodstream, and can do all kinds of things. So, and-
I'll give you a little bit of time.
Okay, I drove from Loma Linda, there was a lot of traffic, so I, I was practicing on the way here, but, so, you know, these diesel pollutants, they're also, there's other things that they're made up, in addition to NOx, you know, contributing to ozone, the particulates, there's also the carcinogens that are associated with them, right? So we, we know this, it's not great, and this is the nature of what we deal with. And so in January of this year, I published a recent study, I wanted to look at how many of the pollutants are we exposed to that are actually significant in studies across the different health endpoints, and how many fall within already the regulatory guidelines, like the EPA sets guidelines, the WHO sets guidelines? How many are linked with health outcomes that, it's clearly the guidelines aren't protective for what we currently experience? And I don't know who to give, I'll, I'll- This is the top of the article, on the bottom of the article, in the left-hand corner, is my, my email.
Just give everything to Darlene. Thank you.
Okay. So, that's the nature of what, what it is here, right? In essence, we subsidize with our health the movement of goods around the nation, it's not great, right? But one of my favorite sayings is, where there is challenge, there is opportunity. And one of the things I want to put to you guys is to figuring out a way, how can you partner with industry where you're building these warehouses, but then also come out on top as one of the best cities where you are promoting health and reducing the risk of exposure, right? And there's ways that you can do these things. And so, from already drawing a line in the sand, right? Because these companies are really smart, I've sat in the meetings with the rail yard, they're really good, they have lawyers, and they're very great at showing you data, and how they're going to make a difference without really making a difference.
If you can try to pull it together.
Okay, I'll, I'll finish here. So that's what I wanted to see you guys do, is really develop a community response team, so develop a coalition, a team, and within a month, get together, have part of the community, and you guys as well, coming up with strategies of how you can reduce exposure around your community. What are your target areas? Do you have daycares? Can you do tree planting campaigns? Can you do filtration systems for any elementary schools that are nearby? So there's a lot that can be done, there's grants that are available, and you probably have a Chamber of Commerce that may be able to help make donations. So really sitting down and saying, as a city, how are we going to be one of those cities that, yes, we're going to have the warehouse, we're going to do it, we're going to do it right, but we're also going to reduce exposure, not only to the warehouses, but guess what? The freeways and any other places, so, that's my advice. Thank you.
The name, Delaney?
Good evening, Council and City Staff. Since taxes will be levy tonight-
Can I have your name, please?
Delaney Delaney. Since taxes will be levy tonight, let's discuss those who collectively pay the most, the middle class. They can neither create a tax shelter like the wealthy, nor receive government assistance like the low-income. They are not able to afford to buy land or apply for entitlements, just another form of government handouts. Our City Engineer was recently commenting on upcoming infrastructure projects, saying that the improvements being done here for anyone that owns land in this area will vastly increase the value of the properties. In contrast, when I spoke with the mayor and asked about the reduced values of properties where warehouses are being built and considered, he said, "I don't care." The property owners and sensitive receptors in our senior communities, the property owners of Summerwind's Ranch, Singleton Heights, and JP Ranch will see a decrease in value due to warehouses, the diesel truck traffic that comes with them, and the impacts to their health and safety, and "I don't care" rings in my ears. A gentleman at a recent community meeting said that during World War II, there were areas of people that were called expendables. Expendable means of little purpose, able to be abandoned. He called the Army Corps of Engineers to ask why place these warehouses next to senior communities. The man he spoke to said, "The reason is revenue." The gentleman I heard went on to say that "We are living souls that want to grow old gracefully, and now we are secondary to revenue and profits, we are expendable." Is the City of Cali Mesa going to continue to put profits over people? There is value and worth in every resident, no one is expendable. We must do better than profits over people. I am a resident and a constituent in this city, no matter where I live, I will support Cali Mesa in remaining one of the very last rural and sleepy little towns in Southern California. Leaders, something for our elected officials and city staff to ponder, leaders innovate. They do not follow the path others have taken. From Los Angeles to Redlands, cities have overdeveloped and built warehouses next to their residential communities, so much so that AG Bonta is getting involved. If you want to truly lead, then do something new and different, innovate, make this city the most desirable little sleepy small town, place to live, in Riverside County in Southern California. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. And now, we will move on to approval of the agenda, consent calendar, and waiver of full reading of ordinances. This is a time for the City Council to notify the public of any changes in the agenda, such as removal of an agenda item, reiteration of the agenda, postponement of the agenda item, or continuance of an item to a future meeting. This is also the time of the City Council to remove items for the council calendar for individual consideration, whether a full reading of the ordinances does not take policy action or approve, or disapprove any ordinance of the agenda. It simply means that the entire text of the ordinance not be read. With that, we will go to, the agenda and the consent calendar are all going to be approved at once tonight, so, have you guys got anything you want to pull, or anything?
Yes, sir, I'll move to approve the agenda and consent calendar.
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's four to zip. And with that, we will go to, you poor sucker, you get to give your little report tonight, if you've got anything to tell us. Captain Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. Evan Peterson, Captain with the Riverside Sheriff's Department. I'm going to go off script a little bit tonight as an intro for myself, for us to remind everybody, we run the contract out of the Cabazon Sheriff's Station. We had a changeover in command recently, I've been here basically the last two weeks, as Captain Solis was moved out and I was moved in. The, the takeover piece, I will say, I met with City Manager, and we talked extensively on some of the parts of starting fresh and anew. One of the things that, as I was reading, as I was referencing some of ad hoc committees, keeping things rural for the city, and some of that stuff coming up for us, I was able to walk in, as I was explaining to City Manager, with kind of a fresh pair of eyes on my expectations of the Calamasa deputies. Our response times, as I've certainly watched other council meetings, saw some of the, the numbers and reports, quite frankly, started developing a relationship with the Fire Chief as I spent the weekend at Fire Camp, rode out with the guys purposefully in Calamasa on 4th of July. As I understand, he had a, he had a better seat at the, at the table than I did that night, as I was out in the streets, and he said he was around your house. I did take note of that, as to where I need to post up in the future. But all of that being said, the parts of recognizing some of the challenge, the challenges that we have as a sheriff's department, I do bring a lot of tenure to the position. I have been with the agency going on 27 and a half years. I spent some time as the contract lieutenant for Eastvale, then went out to the desert and was the lieutenant over Indian Wells for a number of years, and so the contract piece of landing in now, taking over the station and being familiar with City of Calamasa, long-time past resident, I will say, I, I made a joke to the mayor, it finally happened to me, counsel across my tenure, where my parents are longtime plantation residents, and my dad got a call me the other day direct, and say that somebody was set up outside of plantation that shouldn't have been there, and could I, as the police chief, act on that immediately? I never thought that would happen to me in my career, and that finally did happen sadly, that I said, "Of course, sir, let me get right on that, obviously." And so, yes, those pieces of, of our family being in the past area for now 20 years, I'm very invested, and so those parts I bring into the table, as I have been getting around the station to the guys, riding out with them, seeing the ins and outs and challenges as the City Manager and I spoke on, of some of what I see, I referenced him, as we're growing, as we're adding homes, I, I'm watching the calls for service increase for us over the last several years. But as I look at response times, as I look at some other pieces, I, I very much told him, hey, I wasn't coming in the front door looking for, hey, I think we need to start level of service talks, or some of those things, let me get planted and have a bit to work within the confines of what we had, because I do think we do a very good job- because I do think we do a very good job for what we have in the city with a growing community. As I listened to one of, I will say, the comments that the city manager and I were referencing, it talked about somebody saying, "Do we want our police and the police services to be average?" That's absolutely the last thing I would want. And so those parts for me and coming in the front door, I could certainly reference a few numbers tonight as the mayor allowed me to go off script on what we normally do. I think in the future, you'll get some more comparisons and some things as I reflected on what some of our numbers have been prior to my landing and now seeing some of those changes as we have moving forward. And so with that, the numbers for us for the last month, I had statistically, we were down across the board. In fact, it was very good outside of the 4th of July that I think the fire chief and I spoke on was overwhelmingly busy across the board for both of us, quite frankly. No matter how much education we do to the public, we both noticed the commercial grade fireworks and everything else going off until the wee hours of the morning sadly. And so with that, I'll leave my report and close with that. I will say for the public, and the fire chief may be speaking to this, I lived in fire camp through the weekend. I was on the Highland Fire and then that started to the Rabbit Fire and all the rest for us on the agency as we go into a large command position with the fire. Northbound Highway 79, as I was getting asked by several of you, northbound Highway 79 is completely open. We're lifting evacuation orders throughout all of, I will say, Southern Beaumont and that area along there. But southbound is not open yet. I see it in the final stages, but officially it is not open yet. We're anticipating tomorrow, but just for everybody, as I have, I've got a lot of questions on that today. And so keep it in mind as you pass to your ward. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I'll be seeing you guys soon. Thank you.
Fire chief?
So I'll pick up where Captain Peterson, where Captain Peterson kind of left off. We have been very busy since July 4th. And since the captain's arrival in the city, I've talked to council and staff and with these gentlemen back here about our approach to community risk reduction. And I just have to say that it's refreshing and I'm invigorated and Captain Peterson, RSO, wholly embraces the concept of community risk reduction, which goes into some weed abatement issues and enforcement. And I'll just say that later in my report, I'm going to talk about some of that. And we are transitioning from the education and engineering aspect of the community risk reduction approach into the enforcement and are using each other's agencies as a force multiplier. I think it's going to be a great partnership going forward. So with that, I'm going to change up a little bit and I will come back to the numbers, so to speak. And mayor, I'd ask to have you come join me up at the podium.
You want me to read?
Oh, I'm going to read it. And I'd like firefighter Ryan Santos to come up and join us, please. So Ryan's been with us for about two years, gone through the probationary process. And he and his partners in the back work diligently, diligently, day in and day out. And I don't, as a fire chief, get to recognize all their hard work and their efforts as often as I'd like to. And tonight I have that opportunity. On April 20th of this year, Ryan was off duty, participating in a physical fitness and off-duty lifetime fitness program. Firefighting is a very physical job. Ryan was going to the gym as he pulled into the parking lot. He noticed kind of a disturbance in front of the gym that he was walking into. The gym personnel were escorting and helping a man come out of the front of the business and the man collapsed. And Ryan determined that the gentleman was in full arrest. So Ryan didn't hesitate. He could have. He didn't have any duty to respond at that time. He was in gym shorts. He was not within his means. He could have just walked away and called 911. He didn't. Ryan jumped into action. He began issuing orders. He requested somebody get an AED. He directed some bystanders to call 911. And then Ryan jumped into action and started performing CPR. To that end, the local fire agency arrived, took over, began ALS paramedic treatment and transported the gentleman to the hospital. And Ryan had got what we refer to as return of spontaneous circulation, ROSC. Ryan saved the man's life. So for that tonight, I'd like to recognize Ryan with this certificate of accommodation. And Ryan embodies the, and presents the professionalism that we like to see in our firefighters. This is one of your firefighters in the city, folks. Firefighter Ryan.
People don't understand their training and everything else. And I've seen people with the training and they walk out, you know, line with a company. Everyone that works for me, they have CPR certificates and everything. They know they're going to hear them. Even on me, if they want to, but they don't want to. But, you know, it's important to be a person that actually gets involved. And any medium we go to, the first thing they do, that's an exit. You know, who's going to make the call? Who's going to do this? And it's just important to pay attention to them. Edison's so safety minded, it's scary. No, she can attest to it. But thank you. Thank you guys.
Thank you, Mayor. So getting into some numbers and some activities that have gone on since July 4th. I'm going to start at the back. I talked about weed abatement, community risk reduction. There was a concern stated earlier and just what an opportunity for me to be able to speak. City staff, including the city manager, deputy city manager, Public Works, I'm sorry, Public Works, code enforcement, and I met this morning to discuss our strategies going forward of what community risk reduction and weed abatement looks like. But I talked about education, engineering. You know, we've been on a campaign. I've talked about weed abatement inspections and taking a positive step towards that over the last, since my tenure as the fire chief. Deputy Fire Marshal Rodriguez and crew is investigators, I'm sorry, is inspectors, are full force. We're going through the education, continuing with that. That will never stop. The engineering and then moving into the enforcement. We're getting into serious discussions with folks that are, for whatever reason, not compliant with not only the municipal code, but state fire code and common sense. So we're taking that seriously. We're working with our partners. We have Edison doing their part. We're talking with our partners from Caltrans through the highway corridors, transportation corridors into the neighborhoods. And we're taking that very seriously, as seriously as we take our training on the suppression side of the house. To that end, the last time I reported to council was on the 11th. Since the 11th, fire departments responded to a total of 898 calls for service as opposed to last year at this time. We responded to 941. So we're down about 9% in the actual response, calls for service. Down just a little bit. I talked about that. I believe a lot of that has to do with the downturn and the healing on the backside of the pandemic. Medical aids and miscellaneous calls for service, right now at 710, about 90% of our calls. Fire responses year to date are 10% of our total responses. So that's 608 medical aids. About 202 miscellaneous calls are public assist. Many of those are lift assist and we go out and help parties that don't require medical treatment. And the fire responses year to date are 27. Mutual aid given, 32. 32 up significantly from the last report. And we've only been counseled 14 of those. So we've responded 18 times and had 15 mutual aid responses into the city. The average response time citywide has been just under seven minutes. We're right at 6 minutes and 50 seconds average throughout the city. Now, we're looking to reduce that. Six minutes or below is our best response time. That's what we're looking for. Of the significant fire incidents that we've responded to, we had a significant vegetation fire Mustang, off a Mustang a few weeks back. Vegetation fire that we responded to, mutual aid on David Mountain Road. On July 4th, Captain Peterson talked about me having one of the greatest seats in the house. I was up on the high, one of the highest points in the city, coordinating with battalion chief Salmo and our fire apparatus. We upstaffed on July 4th. We staffed not only Engine 1 and the patrol, brush patrol, like we normally do every day. We upstaffed the brush engine and we prepositioned folks. And as dark settled, Captain Peterson talked about the illegal fireworks, commercial grade, that, for lack of a better word, they, people started going berserk. We wanted to show the flag. We put the engines out. We're trying to dissuade people, had law enforcement making their presence. Captain Peterson and I were texting back and forth, talking with the battalion chiefs and responding to calls, trying to do that proactive, positive patrol in the neighborhoods. I think that going into next year, we'll be bringing some legislation, some municipal code language before council. And I think we need to up our ability to do enforcement to folks that don't comply. I think it's time to start issuing citations and take things serious when people don't want to comply. I think we need to have that ability. But that's a leader discussion. So July 4th, towards the end of the evening, we responded to a vegetation fire at the dead end of Chandler. Prepositioned by chance that night in the fire patrol was firefighter Santos and firefighter Nick Ortega. We got dispatched to a vegetation fire. That's the terrain where, when things are troubling to us, you know, you have train, wind and fuel. When those three things get in alignment, it causes us problems. Local citizens had jumped in, but the patrol was right around the corner. These guys pulled up and the patrol pulled a line and started knocking the fire down as the engine started getting on scene. Prepositioning and their quick work kept it from running the hill into some heavier vegetation and causing us some great problems. Guys did a great job. Second vegetation fire, Sandalwood, you know, Lone Star Court. Our guys responded mutual aid over this last weekend. We got hammered in town. And we responded to the Highland incident over on the south side of Sun Lakes. And then we responded to the Rabbit incident with mutual aid with our brush engine. We backstaffed with our, the city was covered with an engine. Actually, we had two engines covered. We dedicated the brush engine and called these guys back into work. They're healing up. It's been a long weekend for them, very long weekend for them. There's some video footage out there of our guys doing some structure defense at the Rabbit incident. And I've got to say, so it's, we're in our sixth year as a municipal fire department. We've taken up a lot of challenges. We've climbed a lot of hills. We've trained a lot. We've taken some hits along the way with some scrutiny. Your firefighters are seasoning, they're developing. Your company officers are making decisions that other fire officers, it takes many years to develop. Your crew's doing a great job and I just can't say enough about them tonight. And pending any questions you might have, that's the end of my report.
Anywhere? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, open, public hearing. Item number 14, public hearing, special assessment of delinquent refuse fees. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This item is for the annual public hearing for special assessments of delinquent trash fees. Title 8 of the Cali Mesa Municipal Code provides for the collection of solid waste, delinquent accounts through liens on real property. And it further states that the city council shall fix a time and time, date and place for a hearing and report any objections or protests thereto. At your June 5th, 2023 meeting, we adopted resolution 2023-25, which set the public hearing for tonight. CRNR provided the notice of public hearing to each property owner whose account was delinquent and potentially in an assessment position, notified them of the public hearing to be held on July 17th. Public notice was also published in our local UCAPE Cali Mesa news merit. The delinquent account list provided by CRNR at the time of this packet contained 104 accounts at the time of that packet run. However, today we were notified that 12 of those properties, customers have paid their balance due. And so those will be removed from the list prior to the list going to the county for assessment for the tax roll. The deadline for the tax roll is August the 10th. So I wait as long as I can and we try to give as many people as possible to be able to pay their bill before we do send it off to the county. So any other payments that come in, CRNR will let me know that. And we will take those off of the roll as those come in prior to that deadline. The city also receives a $25 administrative fee that is also assessed to the property owner and probably doesn't cover the time that we spend. But that is what was selected many years ago and has stayed the same. So tonight, staff's recommendation is to open the public hearing, take public testimony and adopt resolution number 2023-40, a resolution of the city council, the city of Cali Mesa, California, confirming the report of charges to be placed as special assessments for delinquent refuse fees. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I also noticed that Alex is here from CRNR. So if there are any questions, and I do believe we have one speaker slip, Mr. Mayor.
Now, would it be right to call Alex up now or shall I go to the person?
I would, I would have the public come and speak.
Pardon?
I would have the public member come and speak.
Thank you. Ed Carol Martinez, or Marquez?
Good evening, everyone. I'm here because my husband called CRNR earlier this year and to tell them that we were missing a can at our rear house at 35982 Singleton Road. There's a front house at 35980, but he didn't mention that address. He only called about the house that had a missing can, the green can. And they told me they would send one out. However, a couple of months later, we get a bill for 35980 Singleton Road and they're claiming that they dropped off a black can. I made no less than four phone calls to CRNR trying to straighten this out because we're getting this delinquent bill for two months' service that we never got and we never even got a can. We have serviced for the property because we have three 90-gallon cans servicing the two houses, which are about 50 feet apart. I talked with PJ, your code enforcement officer, and she told me that for a duplex, or two houses on a lot, it was her understanding that three 90-gallon cans were adequate and they've always been adequate. I have a letter from the tenant in back. I have quite a few things here, but I have copies of the bills that we've been paying on auto pay. And I have a letter from the tenant in back and one of the other neighbors. If you could pass that around. And and here's an old, I can lay out with the two houses showing the owner lot. And here's an old, I can lay out with the two houses showing the owner of the lot. I also have pictures of the trash cans that were out this way. Thank you. They are every week, only three cans. And I have a close-up of the cylinder numbers and also the contents of the cans, showing that they're only half full. And that's a normal week.
Mr. Mayor, perhaps Alex from CRNR could come and address?
That would be a good idea.
Maybe this?
Well, if you guys want to, you know, step aside for a minute?
These are the two, the placement of the two houses. And there is the placement of the cans where they're kept during the week.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So I noticed that you're, just, if I could say one more thing, I noticed that your law says that you have to provide service for the property to make sure every part of the property is serviced for trash. And the setup that we have with the large ninety-gallon cans, instead of having three thirty-six-gallon cans for each house, is really more adequate for us. We have dump trailers, so all of our large cuttings are taken to green waste. We don't leave any cuttings out on the curb. We don't tie up any bundles of cuttings. There's no extra work with picking up anything for us. We do everything ourselves on that, in that regard. So I'll let, I'll let...
Thank you. Alex?
Good afternoon, honorable mayor, council. My name is Alex Brakovich with CRNR. I don't know the specifics of this particular issue, but we'll be more than happy to get the individual's name, phone number, contact information, and I'm sure we can address this and take care of it tomorrow.
Works for me.
Yep.
Be happy with that answer, or actually get resurfaced?
Yeah.
We'll have to work it out with them.
Yep, we'll take care of it.
And I'll wait to hear from CRNR, and that property will be removed before it's sent to the county.
Okay. I have nothing else from the public, so right now I will close the testimony from the public and close the public hearing. And is there any discussion with the council? Can I get a motion?
I'll move to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty, a resolution of the city council of the City of Cala Mesa, California, confirming the report of charges to be placed as special assessments for delinquent refuge fees.
All in favor?
Aye.
That motion was to resolve this one issue as stated by the city clerk on that one property.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Just for the record, yeah, you guys will be taken care of. Okay, I'll open the public hearing for special assessments of weed abatement charges. Charlie?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This item is for the annual public hearing for the special assessments of weed abatement charges. The twenty twenty-three weed abatement program was conducted by the city's fire department, and first inspections commenced on or about the first of March. A hundred and forty-three properties were identified as a fire hazard due to weeds and other flammable vegetation. Notice to abate letters were mailed to the property owners as listed on the last equalized tax roll and compliance with requirements of Section eight dot one oh dot oh five oh of our Cala Mesa Municipal Code. Property owners were given thirty days to abate their weeds and other flammable vegetation. Upon expiration of the thirty-day period, the fire department re-inspected the properties and found twenty-five properties that had not complied with the notice, and additionally, twelve other properties, wow, sorry, twelve other properties, took advantage of our subscription program, offered through the city's weed abatement program, and they have all been abated and invoiced for the charges. The statements were, abatements were completed by our city's contractor, AB Landscape. Notice of the public hearing, which included the amount of proposed special assessments, were mailed to those property owners. In addition, a notice of public hearing was published and posted, and a list of assessments were made available for viewing at City Hall. The property owners had over thirty days to make their payment to the city with the payment due date of today, July seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. As of the date of this report, the city had not received payment for the proposed assessments due on eleven of the twenty-five properties, and additionally, the city has not received payment for invoices due on four of the twelve subscription properties. All of these properties, which total fifteen, have been included on Exhibit A, attached to the Resolution twenty twenty-three forty-one. As of today, we had two property owners who did come in and pay, so those will be removed from Exhibit A prior to sending to the county. If there are any others that come in and pay, we will, we will take those off as well. So, and as you know, weed abatement is necessary year-round, and therefore inspections by the fire department will continue throughout the year. Notice of violations will be sent to those property owners who are in violation of the code. Staff will continue to offer abatement through the subscription program, and those in violation of the thirty-day notices will be abated by the city's contractor. Property owners will be billed, and payments not received by the property owners after the August tenth Riverside County deadline will be held for assessments to the tax rolls in the twenty-four, twenty-five tax year. Staff's recommendation is to open the public hearing, take public testimony, and adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-one, a resolution of the city council, the City of Cala Mesa, California, confirming the report of charges to be placed as special assessments for weed abatement for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. And I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do you get any questions?
No, sir.
Okay, well, we, I don't have any speaker slips for public testimony, and so we will close the public testimony section and move on. I'll close the public hearing, and if there's no discussion from the council, can I get a motion?
I'll move to approve a resolution of the city council of the City of Cala Mesa, California, confirming the report of charges to be placed as special assessments for weed abatement for twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Four zero. Then we'll move on to approval of the final annual engineering report for the City of Cala Mesa, citywide landscaping and lighting maintenance district. Mike?
Good evening, mayor and council. This will not be a very lengthy report. LMD law requires that we do an annual engineers report. Staff presented to council at our last meeting on the nineteenth of June. At that meeting, council set a public hearing for tonight to receive public testimony on the contents of the annual report. There is no increase proposed. The single-family residential rate will remain twenty-one dollars and fifty cents. It will raise about a hundred and nine thousand dollars. In the program, the city expands about two hundred and seven thousand dollars. Tonight, we are asking the council, open the public hearing, take public testimony, and adopt Resolution twenty twenty-three dash forty-two, a resolution of the city council of the City of Cala Mesa, to approve the final engineers' report for landscaping and lighting maintenance district ninety-one dash one for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. With that, that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions I can.
We don't have any speaker slips on this question either, so it's, with that, I'll close the public testimony. And any discussion from the council? Can I get a motion?
I'll move to approve a resolution of the city council of the City of Cala Mesa, California, approving the final annual engineers' report for the City of Cala Mesa, citywide landscaping and lighting maintenance district, number ninety-one dash one, and the levy and collection of assessments within such district for fiscal year twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four, and confirming diagrams and assessments pursuant to the provisions of Part Two of Division fifteen of the California Streets and Highway Code and as provided by Article thirteen of the California Constitution.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Another four to zero. Now, we'll go on to business items. Installation and annual subscription of Flock cameras. City manager?
Yes, sir. Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. This item was to approve the installation and annual subscription for eight Flock vehicle recognition cameras throughout the city. Flock cameras are a useful tool for our law enforcement personnel. It both alerts law enforcement to known suspect vehicles and aids in the investigation of crimes. The vast majority of Riverside County contract cities use Flock, meaning there is excellent coverage in the region. Over three thousand Flock cameras are deployed in Southern California and many thousand more across the, across the country, and this vast network means more data, making it even more useful for our deputies. Images are stored for a limited duration for investigative purposes and are only kept longer if an image is tagged as part of a criminal investigation. It's important to note that the city will not own these cameras. We're just renting, it's basically a rental and annual subscription, so that includes all the storage and everything that comes with the cameras. That includes maintenance and replacement. The only time that we would have to pay for a replacement is in the case of vandalism or theft, which is rare. They said in Southern California, they probably only had about a dozen of those three, over three thousand that that happened, so that's a very rare occurrence. The annual subscription cost is twenty-four thousand dollars, and then there's a few, the cost for installation, depending on what type of installation they have to do, could be as much as fifty-two hundred dollars. That'll be a one-time cost, but that is budgeted for in the supplemental law enforcement fund. Staff therefore recommends approval of the agreement with Flock for the annual subscription and installation of these eight cameras throughout the city. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and as far as their use, Captain Peterson can also answer any questions that the council may have. Thank you.
Questions?
No, sir. Let me just say, I think that this is a wonderful addition to tool for law enforcement. It's, this is, has nothing to do with, with monitoring residents or as a surveillance or anything like that. It's, it's a ad hoc after the fact. They're trying to find somebody's vehicle, or if an emergency happened, a child abduction, anything like that, the law enforcement agency has access to these video cameras, data, to help apprehend the culprits. And so I think it's going to be wonderful. A lot of residents have been talking about the need for more law enforcement, and this is one way that the city is helping with that. And so I think this is going to be a wonderful addition, but no questions, just wanted to make a comment, mayor.
I'll just kind of add to, to that a little bit. I agree with everything that Councilmember Soprantes was saying. So I think it's a great tool for us, and as far as this budget cycle, we weren't really able to add to personnel, but it's a very cost-effective tool to give them a little boost without, you know, compared to the cost of actual personnel. But I think hopefully get some good use out of it, help them assist them with, you know, some of their investigations. So I'm kind of looking forward to see, you know, what kind of results we'll get, what kind of use they'll get out of it over time, and it's a great option to be able to add to that system too in the future. If we think it's effective, we can easily add cameras here and there, whatever the sheriff's department might think would be useful places to add them as the community grows, so it makes a great tool.
Okay, and I have a speaker slip. I'm Mike Baron.
Good evening, council and staff. My name's Mike Baron, six seventy West Avenue L. When I saw this on the thing, I was a little taken back for a second. As you say, yes, it is a great tool for our law enforcement, but let me give you two examples of how this, this, a simple example of this, for somebody who's a law-abiding citizen, truck driver and everything like that, how we get trapped in this. In this city, between Cala Mesa and Yucap, you know what truck I drive? An oh-four brown Chevy Duramax with camper shell on it that does not match my truck, and that's key. That's number one. There's three other vehicles like mine in Cala Mesa and here where the camper shell matches. One is a six-foot bed. I have a true cab long bed, eight-foot bed. The six-foot bed is a gas truck, is an extra cab, and the camper shell matches, okay? And the same thing with the other truck, the other four, the big truck, has the same thing. We all have the same tires, the same wheels, they all came stock, and we all drive the same truck. I was in the state of Utah at the time building the restaurant that everyone knows about. I get a phone call from a guy who I was supposed to be doing a job for and says, hey, I just saw you drive by me. I said, that's impossible, I'm in Utah. He goes, I just saw your truck. You saw one of those trucks. This recognition system that they use here, it's a good tool, it's all over, like you said, there's three thousand of them all over the place. I had the same issue in every edit and the same issue out in the city. I drive out there all the time, they look at the thing, and because I have license plates on my truck, they can look at the license plate and say, you're from Cala Mesa, you're in Western Riverside, what are you doing here at four-thirty in the morning? I work, I'm going to work. Not every single day. Sometimes it's the desert, one day a week, two days a week. Why are you going up here where the million-dollar homes are? That's what I'm working on. Get pulled over. What are you doing here? Go through the whole thing, and the officer can tell you, Captain Peterson can tell you what's going on. It's a good tool, but it does have its backdrops, okay? And being able, because the, the ability to save search, it's looking at the vehicle. It's not telling you what, it doesn't need the license plate or anything like that. So with that thing going on, you have the problem where it's looking at your truck, my truck's brown, it's looking at that truck. There's four other trucks in town that are the same exact-looking truck. Does, I don't know how, know how the camera is, can it tell the difference between a non-placard truck and a placard truck? Is that the gas truck that doesn't have the Duramax sign on the side? Those are the things that, that worry me about this because I've been the victim of this thing before. Two thousand and eight, good example, two thousand and eight Mesa View Middle School. Code goes out over the radio. Now, everybody knows I've got all the radios in the world in my truck, cameras and everything. Code goes out. Large white truck just attempted to abduct a child from Mesa View Middle School. My neighbor and I both have, at the time, white duallys, large white trucks. I'm in the parking lot, I'm in the parking lot of Chase, and that comes out. What do you think they did to me? Turns out, they wanted a Chevy, S-ten Chevy pickup truck, was the large white truck. Looked to us, a sixth grader, that's a large white truck. That's all I wanted to see on that one. Thank you.
Thank you. Captain, do you want to respond to any of that, or I can fake it if you want?
I, I was going to say, for us, the city has approximately thirty odd steps a year, as I was looking at historically for us, and you're right, to your point, the, the tool of what we've seen in recoveries, investigative tools, and those kind of parts, Mike, I'm surprised to hear the, I will say, multiple times. And we don't get that very often. It's been quite the contrary of huge successes with this, and I do have to clarify, as the city manager spoke, it is not a live tracking. It's very much a, we input in the system, the license plate, or you're right, at the highest levels, a child abduction or something, vehicle description and possibly plate, and that is what pops up for us, goes out to all the units across our region, obviously. And so those pieces, I will say, man, they far outweigh for us what you're experiencing, and I'm very surprised, as I'm sure some others are, we don't, we don't get that very often. But for those parts of our vehicle recoveries and the large-scale investigative tools, man, it's been exceptional for us. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, sir. What are we doing with this? Just going to agree on it, or? There's no?
Yes, sir.
Exactly, just an agreement to use the service.
Yeah. Are you all in agreement with going through with this?
Yes.
Well, it's, it's actually an agreement, like an actual agreement that, like a services agreement that we need to approve.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, I'll make a recommendation that the city council approve the order form and master services agreement with Flock Group, Inc., for the annual subscription and installation of eight Flock cameras throughout the city, and authorize the mayor to execute the order form and agreement.
Thank you.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye. Is that what you needed? Well?
Okay, I want to convene the joint city council and successor agency to the Calamaesa redevelopment agency meeting and call to order. Let the, we aren't going to do a roll call, be seen that everybody was, is here except for Vice Chair Hewitt. And we'll go on to the joint consent counter. Can I get a motion?
What, what are we doing? Are we?
Oh, well, it's.
We're approving?
We're approving the, the consent counter.
So JM one?
Yeah, JM one.
All right.
That's it.
Move to approve the consent counter, one item, JM one.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With that, I'll adjourn the successor agency to the Calamaesa redevelopment agency and reconvene the city council. Mayor and councilmembers reporting of county and regional meetings conference. John?
I was not required to attend any regional meetings, but just comments, so I just wanted to welcome Captain Peterson. So I'm looking forward to working, working with him. And just want to thank our, our entire fire department. I know it's been, it's been hot out there, and they've been working hard, so I appreciate, everybody in the entire region appreciates everything that our department's doing and all the firefighters out there trying to battle these fires. So I just want to thank you for all that, your hard work. That's all I have.
Okay. Well, go ahead, Linda.
I have a much worth of meetings to report on. I'm so sorry, I'll make them as brief as I can. On June twenty-second.
Speak into the mic.
I am. Can everyone hear me? Is that better?
That's better.
On June twenty-second, I attended a RTA board meeting where we approved two, two things. One was continued contracts with the bus, student bus passes. And the second item was to change the lobbyist to Cardinal, in Cardinal Infrastructure LLC from David Church. On June twenty-third, attended policy committee meeting in Pomona where it was mostly informational items. I did not attend the RCTC meeting, I had some health issues. But one of the key things was they celebrated thirty years of transportation services with freeway patrol, freeway service patrol. If anybody's ever had to use that service, it's free, they get you off the freeway. That's significant. Let's see. Also, attended SCAG Transportation Committee where, working with California Transportation Commission, approved funding for RCTC, and that benefits our division. I won't go into the details, but it was, it was good, 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 good funding. And, um, that's it. Thank you.
Briefly, one report and then one announcement. First, the report. So on June twenty-ninth, I attended the WRCO general assembly with a number of others who are here. It was at the Pachanga Resort, and it was representatives from all over the county, Western Riverside County. And we basically, the only one business item was to approve the budget. But as a highlight of the event, we, we were able to listen in on an interview with a renowned historian, Doris Kearns Goodwin. And she talked about her research on a number of presidents and their families, and it was just a real delight. Afterwards, it piqued my interest, and I, and I ended up looking into some of the books that she wrote, and so she's got a number of them. So if you're interested in American history at all, she's an expert in American history. She's written books on the presidency of Lyndon Johnson, the Kennedys, the Roosevelts, and perhaps her most famous book is called Team of Rivals. It is on the political genius of Abraham Lincoln, and this was turned into a featured, a major motion picture, directed by Steven Spielberg, starring Daniel D. Lewis, who won the Academy Award for his portrayal of Lincoln in that, in that movie. So quite extraordinary. And she also wrote a fantastic book on baseball, Brooklyn Dodgers in particular, so I like her. So that's it for that report, but just one announcement on, this was actually forwarded to me by our former council member, Wynona Duval, and this is just on a, she wanted me to announce a veterans' fair, which, that is going to be coming up on August twelfth. It's a Veterans Resource Fair and Services Workshop, and the Veterans Resource Fair will be held at the Beaumont Civic Center next month. So again, that's August twelfth from nine AM to twelve PM. They're going to have a number of services. Let me see, just read briefly what she has here. It's a free event, veterans can learn about a wide array of resources and discounts that are available to them and their family members, according to local veteran services. Representatives from Loma Linda, Veterans Hospital, Veterans Affairs, mental health support services, and military counseling services will be there. There'll be over thirty booths with resources and workshops available to veterans. Again, that's August twelfth at the Beaumont Civic Center. That's all, Mayor.
Okay. I haven't got anything to report. I can tell you that I attended the Concert on the Greens, and it was an enjoyable evening. And it, it cooled off to where it was actually livable and everything, that, as the sun was setting down. And then also, I think our city manager will probably help announce what our congressman is doing for us, and give him an attaboy. And it's my neighbors, their popular was dying, and one of their limbs decided to wipe out their service. Well, that's something that's our responsibility. If a tree that's on your property gets into the service, it's not Edison's responsibility. So, you know, pay attention to your trees and make sure they're trimmed to where they won't take out your service. The ones that are running directly underneath the power lines or something like that, that's Edison's problem. But, you know, it's, this, you know, to have your power wiped out Friday afternoon, and they were about to disconnect and everything else, there was a small fire there and everything else from the transformer. But they did an excellent job, our fire department responded immediately and everything else. So pay attention to your, your brush and everything else. I, you know, I've, I've got over two hundred trees on my property, and I do look at them, I do trim, and some of them I've, I've had to cut down. I had one fall on my house. So it's, you know, it's just the wind got too much for it. With that, I will say, hopefully everybody has an enjoyable month, and try and stay cool. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, sir. Once again, Mayor and members of the council, a couple of events coming up. We have Popsicles in the Park Tuesday, July twenty-fifth, and Tuesday, August first, at one PM at Fourth Street Park. It's open to all ages. We'll have giveaways for kites and frisbees and a whole hoop competition, so I know all of you are going to sign up for that, right? There's no need to sign up in advance to show up to the park on, on July twenty-fifth and August first at one PM. Also, this is a, this is a very exciting one. We have the grand opening for Summerwind Park scheduled for Tuesday, August eighth, from six PM to eight PM. So there's going to be more information to follow on that, but it's going to be a great event. So we'll hope you'll join us down there in Summerwind to, to, to get, this is, this is a long time coming for this park, so we're really excited for that. So we're hoping the community can attend that. Keep an eye on our social media sites, our website for more information as it comes available. The State of the City will be street fair style this year. Normally, it's a sit-down lunch, you have to pay to go and things like this, that'll be a free event. It'll be Saturday, August, excuse me, Saturday, October seventh, at Mesa View Middle School. We have, we have confirmed the, the date and the location, so I just wanted to make that official. We have a very creative staff, and their imaginations are already running wild with this one, so I can't wait to see what they come up with. This is going to be a great event for the entire community, so we're hoping that everyone can come out and join us. And as the mayor alluded to, continuing house appropriation committees, they have continually, different departments get what they call community project funding. I had announced previously that we were included in the round for FEMA and Department of Homeland Security for one million dollars for EOC. The, the transportation and human urban development, or housing urban development department earmarks came out, and we were included in two of those, four million dollars for County Land Road and Calamaesa Boulevard intersection improvements, and two million dollars for the Cherry Valley Boulevard interchange. So with that one million dollars, we are set to receive seven million dollars for various infrastructure projects in the next federal budget. Now, we're not in the clear yet. The next step is they have to do reconciliation with the Senate and their, all their funding bills, and it is all subject to federal budget approval. Their, federal, the, the federal fiscal year starts October first, they almost never hit that. So typically what happens is there will be a continuing appropriations bill to continue the government while they negotiate. And what we've seen is that they've usually come in, November or December is when they'll, they'll approve the final budget. So that's when we'll get final word whether this, these funds get in there or not. But the fact that they're included, they made it out of committee, is a major, major milestone, and that means they're very likely to be included in the final Senate or the final federal government budget. Finally, I just want to express my appreciation. It's hard to do this because our, all of our staff does great work, so it's, sometimes it's a little bit awkward to just pinpoint, you know, certain folks. But I really appreciate the, the fire department and the sheriff's department's efforts on Fourth of July. We know there's a lot of activity, we know that those, the hotline was jammed and it was hard to get through, because it's not just Calamaesa that's dealing with this, it's the entire county, right? So they, they oversee from here all the way out to Blythe. So there's, there's a lot of room to cover, and, and everyone was having those issues, you know, where, where there's, where I live, here in Calamaesa, and all the way in points east. And then also to our fire staff for all their great work this weekend. This was, like the chief said, this is a busy weekend for them, so I just want to express my, my gratitude and appreciation for all their hard work. That's all I've got, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I want to say again that I hope you guys come out to the Concert on the Greens, because they really need the participation, and they're always looking for donations. But, and, but it's a good place for family, you know, and it's kids and everything else, they got a jumper there for kids. But it's, they have hot dogs and hamburgers, but it's a good thing. But with that, I will adjourn the meeting, we can all go home and eat. Thank you much.